So tonight, we will begin with the one-minute opening statements, and we'll go straight away, and we'll begin with Lani Kawahara. Please say your name before you begin.
Okay, I'm Lani Kawahara. Thank you to the Garden Island and for Kong for carrying this on the radio. Again, my name is Lani Kawahara. I'm running for county council. I have a...I'm from Kapaa. My family, on my mom's side, is a third-generation Ito Kaua. And my father and stepmom are in the audience tonight. My dad was a teacher at Kapaa High School for 30 years. My...I wanted to say welcome to everybody here and thank you for coming. My background is I'm a librarian at Kapaa Public Library. I have a master's in library and information science. And I also have legislative background. I've worked for Senator Gary Hooser at the state Capitol. And I also help him as a community representative. I do hope you'll give me one of your votes. One of...two of my main platforms are improving the planning department so that we don't have major developments like we did in Puu that all start at the same time after 30 years of having a permit. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Garden Island and Kong for putting this on. My name is Bruce Place. I've been a resident of Kauai since 1972. I've lived on the west side since 1978. I've seen the changes that have come about in the last 30-plus years on Kauai, so I'm familiar with what has happened here. My experience, I've had over 10 years of experience with the Planning Commission, County Council, and the various commissions, including the Transification Rental. I have spent more time at the council than any challenger here. I have also spent more time and addressed more issues and have experience on issues than some of the incumbents. I have a background that extends into every aspect of this governmental process of Kauai. The...also with our economic situation right now. We have an economic crisis, and I have...I'm completely familiar with the budget. Well, not completely. I'll say I'm familiar with the budget. And I have some direction that we should be going. Thank you. My name is Bruce Place.
My name is Derek Holcomin. I want to thank my two parents out there for showing up and being loyal. My wife, my good friend Chris Takanaka, and my two children. I want to thank the island of Kauai and Ni'ao and everybody that's tuned in. My experiences, I was elected to the Board of Directors for KIUC, where I served as second vice chair, chair of the Strategic Planning Committee. I was appointed by former mayor Brian Baptiste to the Charter Commission, where I served as a commissioner. I serve as a director for the Kauai Police Activities League. And I'm a charter director for the Lihue Business Association. So thanks to everyone for showing up. I look forward to answering some questions. Thank you.
My name's Tim Bynum. I'm running for reelection to the county council. That's a new thing for me. I'm in my first term. I've lived on Kauai for 19 years with my wife Jenny, my son David, my daughter Kelly, who's a freshman at UH, and I have a grandson Kavika. You know, over the years, I've had the opportunity to work on community projects on Kauai and meet people from all over the island. And what a great place we live. The last six years, I've been focused on county government. I spent three years working for Brian Baptiste in the administration, doing community work, and for the last two years on the county council. So I woke up the other day and realized that I have a lot of experience and I have a lot of knowledge about county government. And I'm excited about the opportunity to continue to serve. My name's Tim Bynum.
My name is Rana Gore, and I'm a council candidate. And I thank the Garden Island for this forum. I was raised in Kekeha in a family of 13, in a plantation environment. And we went to the rubbish pile a lot, which is called the landfill now, too. Now I find out what we were doing was recycling things. And that's how I grew up, anyway. I left after graduating from Waimea High School in 1966 and actually swore I'd never come back. But I did come back 23 years ago. I studied architecture at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. And I practiced architecture there for about 14 years. And there, I experienced the city, which had a population of about 40,000. And I seen the growth and experienced the growth of up to $80,000. I mean, 80,000 people, which is what we are faced with today. So I would like to be on the county council to help this county grow properly. Thank you.
Aloha, Kauai. My name is Christabel Kauaheke aloha. And I'm very thankful to be here tonight. I like Ron. I grew up in Kekeha, and it was one of the most wonderful experiences. We had a microcosm there. And we learned everything there is to learn in Kekeha. I'd like to acknowledge my household that's here today. They're noisier than that normally. I was...I went to school after graduation and was educated for as a music teacher. And later on, I decided to go to law school and was accepted there. And I've been a deputy attorney general for 22 years with extensive experience in matters of government. My main reason for running is to restore the aloha spirit in government in my way, as being a living example and being committed to make things work between people. Mahalo, Christabel Kauaheke aloha, county council.
Aloha mai kako. My name is George Sonish Jr., and I'm a first-time candidate for Kauai County Council. Mahalo to the Garden Island and the people of Kauai who is listening on the radio. I am born and raised here in Kauai from Waialua. My family is here tonight. I attended Kapaa High School, also Kauai Community College, where I majored in hospitality and visitor industry. And also the University of Avai et Hilo, where I studied political science and administration of justice. The reason why I'm running for county council is to truly be a young and new, fresh voice for the county council and for the people of Kauai. I would be so honored and privileged to serve you, and I look forward to the many questions and concerns that we have tonight. And I hope I can answer it to the best of my ability. Mahalo for coming and aloha.
I'm Kipukai Les Kuoli'i. Mahalo to everyone for participating in our local government process. I was raised in a large sugar plantation family in Old Puhie Camp. Our mom and dad, Patricia Cavalio and Wilfred Kuoli'i, taught us to be resourceful, work hard, put family first, and take care of our island and each other. Our pure Hawaiian dad is the eldest hanai or adopted son of the Kaur family in Hanapepe and grew up in the taro patches and salt ponds. He shared with us those experiences along with his proficiency as a paneeolo or cowboy, hunter, fisherman, and gardener. I was an honors student at Immaculate Conception, right here in Lihue, Kamehameha, and the University of the Pacific, where I earned my degree in business management. I have over 20 years' experience in government, labor, and nonprofit administration and continue to be a passionate community organizer dedicated to helping others. I appreciate one of your votes on November 2nd. Mahalo.
Mahalo and aloha, everybody. My name is Bill Kaipo Asing. I am now serving my 24th year in government service. It's been a long while. I still enjoy it. I enjoy being the mayor now. Thanks to the six council members who decided that their choice for running the mayor's office would be me. And I'm really enjoying it. I think it's a wonderful place. The experience that I'm getting there is just immeasurable. It'll count a lot into when I get on the council. Hopefully, I get your support. It'll just be immeasurable. And it'll enable me to get a better foresight from both sides of the council and the mayor's position. Mahalo.
Aloha and good evening. My name is Jay Ferfaro. I have served on the county council for just three terms. I am married to the former Emma Gomes of Hanalei. We have three daughters. All are graduates of Kiluea School, Kamehameha School, as well as the University of Hawaii. And they all have graduate degrees, one in social work, one in business, and one in urban planning. I have been on Kauai for 38 years. I originally grew up on the Waimea coast. I attended public school at Waimea and got my formal business training through the University of Hawaii Community College system. My community service here on Kauai includes president of Habitat for the Humanities, past president for the Kauai Historical Society, as well as a trustee for the museum. I hope to be reelected, and I ask you for one of your votes because I want to continue to be a good steward of our island. Mahalo.
Aloha and mabuhai. My name is Rhoda Libre, and I'm from the west side of Kauai. I was raised in a little town called Kamakani on the west side of Kauai. I went to Kamakani Elementary School, Waimea Intermediate and High School, Kauai Community College, and UNLV in Las Vegas, Nevada. I currently sit on the State Marine and Coastal Zone Management Council for the state of Avai, as well as the Campos and Lua Committee, as well as the Regulatory Administration Review on the state of Avai. I also served with the Kauai Westside Watershed Council since 1993. And many of my...I'm sure many of you have seen me with a lot of the community events and celebrations here, not only on the west side but throughout the island. This election is not about all of us. This election is about each and every one of you out there. We need to reinvest in our regional communities to be ahead of the rest through self-reliance, sustainability, and restore and protect our ohana and beautiful Kauai. Mahalo, Kauai. Aloha. My name is Rhoda Libre.
Thank you. Aloha to everyone. My name is Dicky Chang. I'd like to say aloha out to the listening audience on Kong AM 57, also to our viewing audiences that will be watching us on Hoikee Television. And thank you certainly to all of you for coming. I am again Dicky Chang. I was born and raised on Oahu in a plantation town called Wahiwah. I moved over officially to the island of Kauai back in 1987 to open up then the Western Kauai Hotel. I was a head concierge, guest services manager. Been, like many of you folks, to the hurricane. I actually did sales for the Hyatt to try to book business to get them, our visitors back here to the island of Kauai. I presently work with many not-for-profits. I was the campaign fundraising chairperson for two years for our United Way. I work closely with our visitor industry chair to walk advisory board for the food bank. I also sit on the Board of Directors for Kauai Chamber of Commerce. I ran for office in 1992. The hurricane hit eight days before the election. I had a great time. 16 years later, I am seeking a seat for the Kauai County Council. It's time for a Chang.
Good evening and aloha. My name is Darryl Kanishiro, running for county council. I was born in Waimea, Kauai, under the direction of Dr. Brenniki. I'm not going to give you my date that I was born. My government experience includes working for Mayor Tony Kunimura in 1983 as an executive assistant and also working as a director of economic development. I served eight terms on a county council. And recently, I was selected unanimously by the current county council to fill the term of Mayor Kaipo Asing. Currently, I am involved with...my professional experience includes being an executive assistant at Kauai Petroleum Company. And also, I have a company called Koloa Town Activity Center. And I also farm and raise cattle and sheep. And I ask for one of your seven votes for county council, Darryl Kanishiro. Thank you.
Well, candidates will move quickly into the question and answer portion. We're going to begin with Bruce Place, who's going to answer the first question. Got enough cord there? We are going to have a different...shortly after seven, we're going to pause for changing of the tape, I just learned. So shortly after seven, wherever we're at, we're going to pause for a moment. And I'll just announce that and we'll stop. Bruce, we're going to go to the first question of five questions. You'll each have two minutes to answer. We'll have a one-minute warning, a 30-second warning, a 15-second warning, and a time warning. The first question, "With a new administration and a new county council, what will you do to foster an effective working relationship between the executive and legislative branches of Kauai County Government?"
Oh, he's going to let me...I wanted to recognize my stepmother. I got nervous and forgot. So Don Fraser Kawahara. Thank you.
As a council member, I have the unique ability that I have worked with the administrative branch extensively. I work with county engineers, planning director. I know commissioners. I...Wastewater, the list goes on. I have worked with these people over the last 10 years. I know them personally. Matter of fact, I'm actually working actively with Donald Fujimoto on the break wall providing information. Also, too, a new person on is Jim O'Connell. He is a shoreline specialist on Seegrant. Been working with him. So as a council member, I will not be antagonistic towards the administration as we have seen in so many councils. I work with them. Also, it is my...well, it's just my nature. I work with people. Even if we disagree completely, I still work with them. You can ask any council member. You can ask anybody. We can be completely opposite. I'll still sit down and talk to them. We can come to an understanding, and we may continue to disagree. But then, but then life goes on. And I don't hold it against them, and hopefully they don't hold it against me. But as a council member, I will be able to speak to these people, the ones that are in the administration, whoever they are, manage to get effective legislation done that will benefit the people, and also be, hopefully, workable with the administration. That's my goal. That's what I'm done. And you can look back at my history, and that's just where I am. It's just...it's something that comes natural with me. So I think I'd be a good council member, and we could just work from there. That's a really lame answer, I tell you. But with 15 seconds, well, that's what happens when you're first. So thank you very much. My name is Bruce Place, mumbling away here.
Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, no, thank you. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Now, can you hear me? Okay, okay. Aloha, Derek Holcomin. I guess the first thing that I would do to foster a positive working relationship is to not let ego get in the way of a good decision. Often, too often, we see ego get in the way of a good idea. And I think that's very sad, and it's detrimental to our people who are out there to serve. We've got to remember who we're serving. The second thing that I would do is just to recognize that it is our job to work with the other six council members and the mayor. That doesn't mean that we're all going to be nice and friendly and agree with everything that everybody says. That's not the way it works. The separation of powers are put forth in place to provide a system of checks and balances. And it's an effective system. That means that we're all checking each other out and making sure that nobody has absolute power, which leads to absolute corruption. So I understand that we're not going to always disagree or disagree with everything. But we've got to remain professional, and we can't let ourselves get in the way of a good decision. Thank you.
My name's Tim Bynum, and I want to tell you that my background is I'm a marriage-family therapist. And my...you can't hear me? Okay, I'll start over. Hi, my name's Tim Bynum, and I want to let you know that my background is I'm a marriage-family therapist and a social worker. And in that profession, all you really have is the relationship, your credibility, and honesty. And so, you know, we all know, if we look back over the last few administrations, that it's been really contentious between the administration and the council. And we need to understand what our roles are. The person who wins the mayor runs the county. They won the election. They get to make the decisions. And the council provides oversight, not micromanagement. And often, you've seen micromanagement come from the council, where they go into every detail. You know, the relationships are important because, you know, I think I'm a person who has a lot of experience and a lot of good ideas. But I'm not so married to my idea that I think it has to be that way. I believe that working together, we come to good decisions. If I start with one idea and my colleagues start with another, and we listen to each other, treat each other with respect, and really look for the common ground, even though it may not be where I started, it's probably a better decision than where I began. Because then, when we implement that issue, we'll be all on the same page. We'll have buy-in, and it'll be more success. I know both of the candidates who are running for mayor. I trust the voters to make a good decision. And I think that I'll have a strong working relationship with either of them and with my colleagues on the county council. My name's Tim Bynum. Thank you very much.
My name is Rana Gore. It is very important for me to, on the council, to know that I'm there for the people, and it's not about me. It's not about any individual council person. It's about for the people. And it is important that we all collectively work together. I sit on the state land board with six other members. As I do on the land board, I will make a point to find out the objectives of each council person and on their views and on how they feel that they can accomplish helping this county. And if I can support them, I will. And if I can't support them, I will find a way to work with them for common ground so that I can support them. It is very important that we all work together and not... I have to say, the last year, this past council has been the most polarizing, divisive council ever. And I intend, if I get elected, to help my fellow council members get away from that type of leadership. And I'm sure everyone here feels the same way. My name is Rana Gore, and I'm running for county council. Thank you.
The aloha spirit...
Please state your name.
Oh, it'll come. Christabel Kauaheke aloha. The aloha spirit is a deep, innate way of life. It means more than just hello, goodbye, or see you around. It means I care for you, and I will not hurt you deliberately. I care for you and your generations before and after you. If I am elected, the administration, the county staff, and especially the council will become my family. You have relatives that you don't like, but you still work with them. You have to invite them to your parties. You have to live with them, and they're all related to somebody. So they will become my family. And my legal background has told me that fighting adversarial actions is not satisfactory. I will do everything to understand them and stand my ground. They will...I will love them, and they will love me. Christabel Kauaheke aloha, seeking one of your votes.
I am George Sonish Jr., and what I will bring is accountability, honesty, trust, and an open-door policy. And the first thing I would do, if I am honored to be elected, is to sit down with whomever is elected as our new mayor and to just discuss with them what is their goals, what is their objectives, and how we can foster a relationship through each other. And like the candidates before me have all said, we may not always get along, and that's politics. That's government. And that's what makes it effective, is having those who go ahead and not agree. But then again, we must remember that we're elected to do what the people have trusted us to do. And that's what I'm going to do with them, is have, sit down, kuka kuka, discussions with them to determine what it is we can do together to make the decisions right for our people of Kauai. So please, give me one of your votes. I'm George Sonish Jr. for county council. Aloha.
Aloha, Kipukai Les Kuoli'i. As president and chief negotiator of the West Hollywood Municipal Employees, a union much like HGEA in West Hollywood, California, I was responsible for bringing workers together to work effectively with city management to achieve positive employee relations, excellent public services, and a fair contract for the workers. Additionally, as a statewide board member for the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement, the Hawaii Alliance for Community-Based Economic Development, and the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, I advocate for the people of Kauai working effectively with fellow board members and community advocates. The fundamental guiding principle that directs my community service and my motivation to collaborate is to always act in the best interest of the people I serve. I'm also guided by active and careful listening, by doing my homework and research, and by paying attention to my na'au, to my gut, or my intuition. I'm blessed to have been born and raised here on Kauai and also to have spent over 10 years on the mainland, working in different communities with all kinds of people. Those experiences make me uniquely qualified to bring people together, to make good decisions, and to solve our most pressing problems while preserving and protecting our island, our people, and our lifestyle. I hope you'll consider giving one of your seven votes to Kipukai Kuoli'i. Mahalo.
We're going to have to take...
Thank you and aloha again. That is an excellent, excellent...is it on?
It sounds low. I think you've got to speak right into it.
Hello, hello? Can you hear me? Okay. Let me start again. It is an excellent, excellent question. And I don't think that there is anybody more qualified to take that on than me. And my reason for saying that is that I have been on the county council for 24 years. I am now sitting in the mayor's seat. And I know and understand the problems between both sides of the aisles. First of all, let me just explain that I formerly worked for Hawaiian Telephone for 40 years. Of the 40 years, 35 of those years was in the management of people area. I managed the people. After the hurricane, I also was called back by Hawaiian Telephone and worked with Hawaiian Telephone during the hurricane, managing 100 people in various segments of the hurricane damage to this island. Now, I think we need to realize and understand that there are three branches of government. There is the legislative, administrative, and the judicial branch. So we need to understand which branch we're in, and we need to work together. It is not easy to get everybody to work together. But we need to try to get everybody to keep on pursuing the idea that what is in the best interest of the county is what we will be striving for, all of us. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jay Ferfaro. My response to that question, and I do agree with Mayor Asing. That was an excellent question. For many of you, you may not know this. I was the founding and executive director for Leadership Kauai. And I think it would be very, very important for the new council, as well as the administration, to start the process with a visioning for our island, using the general plan as the framework at this particular time. I think in my process with Leadership Kauai and also with my international experience in Rarotonga, French Polynesia, it is extremely important to work with mutual respect and mutual concerns. And that's the starting place. There are always items we can all agree on. And through this visioning process, we would hope we would agree... hope we would agree on items and work out from there. Overall, I would say that the county goals are well outlined in the general plan. My analytical skills, my financial skills, help me share information with the other council members. It is so important to share good information to help to make the appropriate decisions. And most recently, as you know, Mr. Singh is serving out the rest of the term as mayor for Kauai. I was very pleased in the last nine weeks where my colleagues, I didn't pursue it as such, but my colleagues chose me to lead the rest of the term of the current council. And so that would be my commitment, is to make sure that we have an opportunity with the new council, the new administration, to take some time for visiting and finding common goals. Thank you again. My name is Jay Ferfaro.
Aloha. My name is Rhoda Libre, and I concur with both of these gentlemen here. That is a very, very pertinent question. I would foster a holistic relationship amongst all the branches, and we're dealing with old problems but new faces, and it's very important that we take a look at all of our options. For, since the early 90s, I've been a video journalist and reported on many of our community and governmental issues and our conditions here on Kauai, especially on the west side. And I served with the West Side Watershed Council, which many of us have differences, but we've come to a common ground, and this is where we begin to find the common ground. We need to balance our county council. First of all, we need to balance the county council in order to make wiser decisions. I serve on SWAC, the Solid Waste Advisory Council for our county, and we had a lot of differences, but we managed to hash out all of our differences and come to the common ground where we need to take care of the trash. Everyone has different opinions, but when we deal with the issues of our county, the first and foremost is our community. That's all of you, each and every one of us. So this is where I would start fostering and giving out all of the information. I serve on many committees in the state and on our county as well, and I believe that all of the information, I believe that I will add more options to our county council. Please remember me. My name is Rhoda Libre for county council. Aloha.
Thank you. Thank you. Once again, my name is Dicky Chang, and for the radio audience, again, Dicky Chang. First of all, in regards to how would I work with the council members, I would love to say that the present council and myself have been friends, personal friends, for many, many, many years. As far as the administration is concerned, I've been blessed to work very, very closely with then-former Mayor Marian Kusaka's administration, Mayor Brian Baptista's administration, of course, right now presently, Mayor Kaipoa Singh's administration. I believe that I have worked very, very well with every single department head in this administration, from public works to civil defense, to teenage programs, to affordable housing. I've worked very, very closely with the public safety. I'm very blessed to be said that I have been endorsed by both the firefighters here on the island of Kauai as well as Shoppo, our state of Hawaii organized police officers. And I have a very, very, very well-working relationship. As a small business person, I understand small business. I understand what you need to do to keep small business viable here on this island of Kauai. I have the contacts right here on this island of Kauai statewide, nationally, and I work very, very closely with a lot of sports activities, a lot of not-for-profits, you know, the Film Commission and what have you. So when it comes to a matter of working with people, I'm just like people, and I'm people person. My attitude is always, it's not how can, no can, no can, how can. We just gotta get it done. What's that saying? Can, can, no can, how can? So we gotta get out there and just do it all together. Mr. Kawakami talked a little bit about eagles. Trust me, I'm way, way, way too old to have an eagle, but I love myself, but I don't have eagles. However, I do know that I can work with people and get the job done for the benefit of all of us here on Ni'ihau and Kauai. Thank you so much. Aloha.
Aloha, and good evening. My name is Dero Kanashiro. If we look back at the experience I've had for the years I served on the late Mayor Tony Kunimura's administration, serving, as stated before, as the executive assistant, serving also as a director of economic development, I know and I realize what the administration needs to do to set the policies that come before the administrations and to carry out the policies that are set out by the legislative branch. My years on the county council, 80 years on the county council, I served as the chair of the planning committee, I served as the chair of the finance intergovernmental committee, I served as the chair of economic development committee, and with those experiences, I know that I can foster a real good relationship with the administration, knowing the facts and the problems they will face, whether it's with finance, economic, or other issues. And I believe that I have the experience enough to realize that whatever we do, we need to do it and put the people in front of us first. Our decisions will be made based on those facts, and I know that each and every one of them that works for the administration, especially the mayor, will always put the people first, and I think that's the key, and we need to do that, and we need to work together to accomplish that. When I was appointed to the current county council, Joanne Yuki Muris' comment to me was, he set a very cool and common effect on the county council. Thank you.
My name is Lani Kawahara. Fostering good working relations, I believe, really requires understanding the principles of respect, thoughtfulness, and open-mindedness. The fact of whether you're in the executive office or the legislative offices should have some part to play on that, but mostly what you're dealing with is people, and people respond to respect, thoughtfulness, and open-mindedness. In my work as a librarian, I work on all levels. I work with the community, I work on the local level, and I also work on the state level with our offices in Honolulu, always requiring excellent, good working relationships. I also, in my work with Senator Hoosier, I've developed legislative contacts at every level, including state level and federal level. So being able to work at all those levels does require you to be able to work well with everybody that you come into contact with. I believe I have those skills, and I would really appreciate one of your votes so that I can use those skills for the people of Kauai. Thank you. Lani Kawahara.
Okay. That concludes the first question. We'll now move on to question number two, which will begin with Derek Kawakami. What is your stance on the proposed waste-to-energy component of the Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan?
That's an excellent question, and I gotta say, my stance on the waste-to-energy plan is that it requires our due diligence. In order for us to fulfill our obligation to the people, that we will do our due diligence, everything should be looked at. However, I think a more appropriate solution to our solid waste program is to implement curbside recycling. I say this because we... It's the option that I would like to pass on to our children. It's a lot cleaner, it's a lot environmentally sustainable than the other options. Curbside recycling also provides convenience for our people. If you want people to do the right thing, we gotta make it easy and convenient for them. You know, we've become a society that is based on convenience, and we've become a society that throws a lot of things away. So we gotta make it easy and convenient, number one, and curbside recycling tackles that. Two, if you're gonna do curbside recycling, you're gonna have to have a MRF facility, and that's a materials recovery facility. It goes hand in hand. I don't think they can operate without each other. A materials recovery facility basically is a facility that will sort through the recyclables and convert trash into a commodity. So I'd like to look at these two options. Once again, in order to be diligent, we gotta look at all the options, but these are the two options that I would like to see, is the options that I would like to pass on to the next generation. Mahalo.
Hi. This is Tim Bynum, and I wanna talk more about curbside recycling because I agree with most everything Derek just said. The curbside... When I came on the council, we had a plan that gave kind of lip service to recycling, but it didn't have the specifics in the plan that requires to do that. So curbside recycling that we're talking about, and Kauai needs to be educated about this because this is the direction we're headed, is called a three-can system. And the idea is that you'll get three cans, and there'll be automated curbside pickup of trash in the future instead of three guys taking everything that you leave at the curb. One can will be blue, and it'll be for mixed recyclables. That means anything you can recycle, you put into one can. That's what makes it convenient. You'll have another can for green waste and eventually food waste that can go to a composting facility to compost. So both, neither of those go to the landfill. The composting facility is really important because it creates a product of a high-quality soil amendment that we really need in order for agriculture to succeed here, because our soil's depleted. So the third can, the smallest, will be for disposables, the part that goes to the landfill. You know, this is like the gold standard of recycling. It's what will be successful for us. And regarding waste-to-energy, I'm not convinced that we have the waste stream left over if we do a stellar job at curbside recycling for a waste-to-energy plan that costs hundreds of millions of dollars. I'm not philosophically opposed to the idea of waste-to-energy. I just don't think in our small community that we need to make that commitment now.
Aloha. This is Rana Gore, and I'm gonna just answer the question directly.
Thank you.
I can support the waste-to-energy program. We need to get away from fossil fuels, and we have to do all of the above, and waste-to-energy is one. And in developing a waste-to-energy facility, it'll create jobs in this time of need. We have to construct the facility, we have to man the facility, and at the same time, it will provide energy. But one thing I would stress on is that I think the county should put up an RFP for this, and because many companies are lobbying the county to go into this kind of waste-to-energy program. And these people should put up the money, and they're either gonna succeed or they're gonna sink, and I don't think the taxpayers should be paying for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Christabel Kialoha. I believe one of the first steps we have to take to any kind of waste program is widespread community support to start recycling in our households, and we need all community groups to support it. We might need a show to go on the road and have prizes for the best ideas for recycling, but we need our grassroots people to buy into it and make it their own. Once they do that, then we need an effective separation of waste products. Effective, you know, we can put it in separate cans, but we have to make sure there's no contamination, because that might hamper the conversion of that to energy or whatever else we're gonna go. Any conversion to energy process, we have to be careful about whether or not there'll be toxic waste as a result of that conversion. All of this should be in a balanced, coordinated ecosystem, considering our island's demographics and resources. It should fit the size of our community, the extent of our waste disposal, and our capacity to continue to have this system coming in. I know that the Ke'akahha organization, Eola Ma'oke'akah, Kaleo Ke'akah, has been talking to someone that was brought up to a company that was first brought up to our information by former candidate John Hoff. And if this works out, it sounds like something that they would pay for developing the plant. And I would like to see that examined further. It sounds like it would work, and I'm hoping something like that would work without killing us on the cost. Christabel Kialoha.
Aloha. George Stonish Jr. here again. At this time, I do not support a waste-to-energy facility. Instead, I would go ahead and support a materials recycling facility instead. I feel that a materials recycling facility will be more feasible for us. It'll actually be a gain for us in the future as well. Right now, we need to focus also on alleviating the amount of trash that's in our current landfill, and I think by reusing our resources and also taking out the trash from there, we can go ahead and reuse our energy through there as well. I heard a comment about it'll decrease our dependency on fossil fuels, but it'll also increase the amount of gas emissions that will be put out through this facility as well. And this is why at this time, I do not see that it's the right time for environment. I do support curbside recycling. I think this is something that's gonna help us out a lot, and I do support the idea, especially the trial run over on Oahu with having the different colors of the bins placed out in the home pickup areas, and I think that this will help us to alleviate the trash. Our landfill is very full. I believe we don't even have enough probably for the next two years until it's gonna be full to capacity. So at this time, I would like to focus my attention, if elected, on getting that materials recycling facility put to work and put into our government. Mahalo. George Stonish Jr.
Aloha. Kipukai Kualii. Our new mayor and council needs to act quickly to implement our Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan. Our landfill is quickly reaching capacity, and the current expansion will cost us over $26 million. So we need to implement the plan. However, I don't support the waste-to-energy incinerator option that's included in the plan because the projected capital cost is $92 million, and energy production is estimated at only 10%. Also, to me, this is like a hopeless or pessimistic option that's assuming that we won't change our ways, that we won't start doing more recycling, and that we won't start consuming less, and that we'll always have tons of trash to feed this incinerator that we spent $92 million to build. So instead, what I support is curbside recycling and other aggressive programs for maximizing, reduce, reuse, and recycle. And I also support community volunteer zero-waste efforts. So piggybacking on what Christabel Kialoha said, we need to do aggressive community organizing around massively increasing our county's recycling program. So curbside recycling, and we just need to get, it's gotta be a way of life for everyone. Our little kids need to learn that's just the way it is. We live on this beautiful, pristine island, and in order to keep it that way, we need to do better with what we're doing with our trash. Finally, I also support the fast-track development of a materials recovery facility, a MRF, a Center for Hard-to-Recycle Materials, a CHARM, and the establishment of multi-organic material composting facilities. I'm Kipukai Kualii. I appreciate one of your seven votes. Mahalo.
Thank you. Hello? Am I on? Hello, hello?
I think we have.
Am I on now? Yes, okay. First of all, let me just say that we have an Integrated Solid Waste Plan. We paid over $350,000 for this plan, so we should do what the plan says. There are areas in the plan, I also have some questions, and the question is related to the question that you just asked. I am not totally satisfied that that is the way to go. I plan to make a trip to the mainland to visit one of these stations. I did talk to the people that run these programs, and I will be visiting with them to be sure as to what their operations look like. I do believe also that what is not included in the Integrated Solid Waste Program right now is a MRF, and we need to have... I did talk to the people that run these programs, and I will be visiting with them to be sure as to what their operations look like. I do believe also that what is not included in the integrated solid waste program right now is a MRF. And we need to have that MRF included in the plan. I do not believe that it is part of the plan now, and that will help us recover more items and reuse and recycle those items. And I believe if we look at the plan and make sure that everything that we, we review is tied to, to that plan, it's very important that, you know, we're talking about people that have been in that game for years and years and years. And those are the kinds of people we hired and paid money to do this plan. Thank you very much.
Hello, good evening. I'm Jay Fafaro. I want to point out that Mayor's saying is exactly right. When the plan came back to us from RW Beck, the council sent them back and said, "There is no identified activity for both a MRF and a CHARM." And this county wants you, as our consultant, to identify that. We have some preliminary numbers from them, a location, but the bigger question here is the overall energy strategy for this county. You cannot necessarily be talking about a waste facility without first understanding what is our strategy on energy. I would concur that we need the MRF. I would concur, we need the CHARM facility. And this council has put in money for the colored container curbside. We have a pilot program. We have budgeted money for the mechanical pickup, for the purpose of saving operating costs. But we need a strategic thought about the many types of energies that we would have to come up with. Wind, solar, wave, an entire package, because one answer will not solve our energy need. We also need to talk seriously about the grid and the demand periods and work with businesses. When do hotels do laundry? It needs to be after the demand period, because as we add demand, we find ourselves in a very awkward position, because the PUC then requires us to build redundancy. I want to say that I take great pride in this. I'm the first business recipient of the Green Start Award from the Hawaii Chamber many years ago, because we need to think through our energy plan, and we have budgeted money specifically to get all the stakeholders together. Thank you.
Aloha, Rhoda Libre. I serve on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, what Jay Fafaro talked about. And we spent hundreds and hundreds of hours going through all of the plans, and when RW Beck came up with one option, we didn't want that, so we sent him back. He came up with two more, we sent him back, came back with three more. What we need to take a look at is a holistic approach to this, because a lot of people think it's trash is a big problem, but you gotta think about it this way, too. It's economics. It's full-on economics with the methane coming from that hill, that's economics. There's more energy there. And there, we have our opportunity to create new products, to take down that mountain and create new products and services, so we can be an apex. Instead of importing everything in, we can create new things with that trash and send it out. Good companies like Unlimited Construction here are going holistic and reusing all the building materials. Also, this economic status is good for entrepreneurship, for our children, for our, for our senior citizens, for our retirees. And what we need to do is do it from region, each community, because each community has different needs, they have different characters, and this is a watershed approach in, in taking care of this problem. We need to turn this trash, because this trash may be someone else's treasure, and of which I think, I believe that we should turn it into our treasure and keep the social economics for us, and not leave a not-sustainable solution for our next generation to pay off for us. Also, the methane, again, is energy. All of the trash there, the paper, everything, the green waste composting is all energy. So, please remember me, Rhoda Libre. Aloha.
Thank you, Dicky Chang. I, I believe that we all need to revisit educating ourselves. I've had the pleasure of working with Allison Fraley with our county and also with the Garden Island Disposal for many, many years, reduce, reuse, recycle. But as most of us know, our generation, we never used the word reduce, reuse, recycle. We never really knew the word of recycle. So, I think what we need to do first and foremost is we, we need to practice what we preach, because as we all know, most of us love to recycle. A lot of us make that as a daily or weekly chore. However, you know, sincerely, there are people that really don't care about recycling. I think we all want to have recycling bins. I think we would all enjoy trash pickups with the reciprocals. One of the things that I learned recently was that the Big Island of Oahu does not do any trash pickup. It's like you separate your own, you take care of yourself, you recycle yourself, there's no pickup. At one time, if I'm not mistaken, on Maui County, you need to pick up, you need to buy your certain kind of bags, you fill up the bag, and the county would not pick up your trash unless it's in that specific bag. On Oahu, I believe, as far as like my mom's home is concerned, I do believe that on Oahu, they do pick up twice a week there on the island of Oahu. But we gotta realize that the population base there is large enough that they can fund such a pickup. We all want curbside recycling, but I think what we do need to know is that if we all agree, we should find out what the cost is gonna be as far as picking that up. Now, Mr. Fafaro talked a little bit about alternate energies. I think what's very, very interesting for Kauai, if you've been down to the beautiful Grand Hyatt Kauai, some of you may have seen the garage. That's just a big, huge solar garage that's able to really power out of the Anara Spa and much of the hotel itself. But very interesting, if I'm not mistaken, the Lihue Airport is gonna be soon covered also with alternate energy, so that's a good thing. And lastly, I was so pleased when I picked up my Kauai business report, when you look at people doing improvements to their home, more than half are all doing solar. So, I think that's a good way that we're starting right here on Kauai. Thank you very much, Dicky Chang. Aloha.
Aloha, Darrell Canachero. Several years ago, I was given the opportunity to visit one of the sites on one of the NACO conventions that I was on in Washington, DC. I served on the National Association of Counties Board and also as a Vice President of the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Steering Committee. We had an opportunity to go up to Pittsburgh to look at one of these waste-to-energy facilities. The waste-to-energy facility does work. There are some other benefits to it. It's costly. For Pittsburgh, one of the interesting benefits I noticed was that with the energy and steam and heat coming out from turning waste to energy, they used it to warm up municipal buildings. But we won't need it here, right? We're, we're warm enough here. If we can figure out how we can make it to cool us off, that would really work. But at the same time, it is at a very tremendous cost. If we can come up with a system that I think would be feasible, would be small enough that can take care of some of the waste streams, it could work. But it won't work alone. We still need to keep on moving towards the idea of recyclables. I still have some reservations about curb recycling, because at the end, the real cost is you gonna be paying for. You're gonna be paying from your pocket to recycle whatever you put out there. I just want to make it clear, it's not, you know, it's a very costly, costly item also. But it can work. But I think the real, the real way to do it is we need to push the MRF program. We need that program right there in the landfill to get whatever we can and recycle it out and keep and lessen the burden on the landfill. Thank you.
I don't believe the waste-to-energy plan is the way we want to go here on Kauai. The, the county has already started a three-R program. I believe we need to intensify it. There needs to be curbside recycling. There will be a cost, as Councilman Canachero has said. However, I believe it's part of the education process that we will need to go through when we decide and decide to understand that throwing away trash costs money. One of the things I'd like to do is institute a pay-as-you-throw type of system, where people would be, if you throw away a lot, you're gonna pay a lot more. And also breaking out in your property bill exactly what the cost is of throwing out your trash. The less you throw out, the more you'll pay. I mean, the less you throw out, the less you'll have to pay. We definitely need to work harder on the recycling, reusing, and reducing program. I agree with Councilman Bynum and also Kipukai Kuoli'i. I have more optimism in our ability to change our way of living in regards to trash and what we throw away, what we keep, what we buy, and what we recycle. Again, my name's Lonnie Kawahara, and I'd like one of your votes on November 4th for council.
Bruce Place. Waste-to-energy, at this point, the normal waste-to-energy plant takes 200-plus tons a day. We don't have that, and it's the last on my list of what we need to do here. As for budgeting as a council member, what I would support is curbside recycling and a MRF facility. Both of these have to be done in tandem, because without doing one or the other, it's just smoke and mirrors. You're just doing curbside recycling with no use for it. For the MRF, the important part to me on this MRF is to recycle on-island. Currently, we send stuff off-island, and that's what we're looking at. The MRF needs to be set up with, with associated plants that would take like paper and cardboard, turn it into paper bags that would be used in our stores, that therefore you would use, you could, like they tell you, you could have four paper bags, because your, your meat makes the bags wet, but it doesn't matter, because you're just gonna recycle again. It's gonna go back to the, go back to the cardboard area where it's made for paper and comes back to you again, so you can actually use. That's my key to recycling. Also, on the bins, I think four bins works better. Plastic, glass, metal, and paper. And make it simple, so that you don't have to think, well, is this plastic or is this this? You just throw it in there, and the MRF, the MRF, the people there will take care of that, of the separating for you. What you will pay for is, is the bin that you don't recycle. So, on that. I'm, I'm familiar with the landfill. Actually, during the EA process, I was the one that had Department of Works come out to WMAA and when the EA bring it to the public, so that they would have, be able to comment on the EA. On your electrical grid, that's KIUC's domain, that is not the county's. What the county did during the KIUC KE time was Article 30, the Electrical Power Authority, which sets up a county power authority. That is our alternate to KIUC. Thank you. Bruce Place.
Okay, that concludes the second question. We're now moving, that concludes the second question. We're now moving on to the third question, which will be answered first by Tim Bynum. Does the county need a new materials recovery facility, a MRF, when the already-existing resource center near the Lihue Airport was built as a MRF?
We absolutely need a MRF, and to take some time to explain that a little more. This three-can system I talked about, you get the highest level of recycling when, as a consumer, you have one can to throw your recyclables. So, if it's cardboard, junk mail, newspapers, tin cans, plastic bottles, whatever it is, goes into one container, which makes it easy. I know people are really into recycling, can have six or eight containers in their garage, and I admire those folks. But if we want the highest return, then we make it convenient. Then that county comes and picks up your one can, right? Takes it to this materials recovery facility, where, because all of these recyclers are commodities, they have value. And so, at that facility, they separate the plastic into the different commodities, and then those are sellable, particularly paper and cardboard, plastic are high-value. And so, once the MRF is built, the operations are paid for through these recyclables. You know, this is the best way for us to go. I really appreciate a council member Fafaro's answer where he tied in energy, because that's another critical need for the county of Kauai, and these things are linked together. As I said, the other component of recycling is composting, where we need to, in the future, grow food on the island for ourselves, for our visitors, and not pay the huge transportation costs that come from, you know, our current system of bringing food from all over the world. Almost everything that we buy in the grocery store is shipped across, and, and if, so we become more self-sufficient. But our soil is depleted from monocropping in the past, and if we're gonna get serious about that kind of agriculture, we're gonna need rich soil amendments that come from that composting, which eventually includes food waste and sludge. We don't want to talk about sludge too much, but, so definitely need a MRF.
This is, I'm Rana Gore. You know, we built that facility right here in Lihue, and for some reason, I think we should continue the MRF there in, in the existing facility. I mean, we've got, we've got buildings there, we've got areas to work with, and there's no sense spending money in a new, new facility. And, and, and I think, you know, it's really simple. The question was, do I support, you know, another facility when the existing one didn't work? And, and, no, that we already have an existing facility. I think we should restart the facility here and, and watch it grow and, and make it work. There's no sense building a new facility if this one did not work. What are we doing? We're studying, we're studying, we're studying. Let's just get the job done. My name is Rana Gore. Thank you.
Thank you, Christabel Kealoha. As I mentioned in the last question, I think we have to work with a coordinated and integrated system that takes into account curbside separated collection and conversion. This program that has been presented to Keikaha organization would convert plastics and green waste into energy pellets, which could be burned cleanly and produce electricity at the, they claim 16 to 19 cents a kilowatt hour. Sounds too good to be true? Let's find out. If we can take our rubbish and convert it into energy pellets rather than just burning them, and that the residue is not toxic, then we can still do our recycling MRF, taking things to make, convert them into things that can be sent otherwise. I think we need this whole system to work like clockwork. The existing facility will have to reuse it and use it for something else, and probably could be into this integrated system. The answer is... yes.
Aloha, George Thonish Jr. here again. I believe as simple as a yes would be, we do need a, a new MRF to be constructed. If we do have a pilot program in place to start curbside recycling, we need a larger facility that can hold the capacity if we do, we do go into that route of doing curbside recycling. I don't believe that the facility we have there now can actually handle the plan that we want, we would like to see for our island of Kauai. So, this is why I would say, yes, we definitely do need a facility out there. Honestly, I can tell you that I did not know that, that, that facility down at the Lihue Airport was actually equipped as a MRF. And it's actually the first I'm actually hearing this tonight on this question. So, I do apologize for looking like a deer in headlights right now for that. So, but I just stick to my answer, and I do believe that we do need to go ahead and, go ahead and do build a new MRF facility, one that will be able to hold the more capacity for our curbside recycling. And this is something that we need to look at more closely in order to protect our reasonable energy here on the island of Kauai. Mahalo.
Aloha, Kipukai Kuoli'i. I really don't think we have a choice. I think we have to make it work. If we love our island and we want to take care of our environment, and we want to make this a, a beautiful, have it continue the beautiful place that it is for us and for our children and our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, for all the, the seventh generations that Derek talks about, we don't have a choice but to make it work. So, I would think with the passage of time and with more people in So I would think with the passage of time and with more people involved and technology changing, that even though it didn't work in the past, we can make the MRF work in the future and the charm. And I really think we need to pay attention to the community volunteer efforts on zero waste. The average, the national average of diversion is 35%. Because we live on Kauai, probably the most beautiful island on the planet, you know, we have a special responsibility. We ought to be a leader when it comes to diversion. You know, why can't we get up there to 60 and 70%? You know, places like Los Angeles, San Francisco, they're doing it. We can do better, and we must do better. With the balance of my time, I just want to let you know that I'm proud to have the endorsements of Kauai's working families, including the labor union endorsements of the firefighters, HGE, ILWU, the laborers, SHOPO, and the UPW. Also, some individuals like Rowan Atachibana, who said, "A thoughtful and compassionate leader, Kipukai understands firsthand the challenges facing our working families and our island." And Jose Bulatal, who said, "Kipukai's love for Kauai's diverse communities shows in his dedication and hard work." I'm Kipukai Koalii. I ask for one of your seven votes. Mahalo.
Aloha and mahalo again. I believe that the question is very...
State your name, please.
Can you hear me?
State your name.
Oh, Bill Kaipo Singh. The question of the facility, do we need it? Absolutely. I mean, it's a straightforward question. Do we need it? Don't we need it? Yes, we do. Absolutely true. Do we have it now? I do not believe that we have it. It is not, in my opinion, a MRF. It is not mechanized. It is not designed to do what the MRF is intended to do, and we just need the MRF. The MRF is not included in our Integrated Solid Waste Plan at this time, and as Councilman Fafaro stated, the council decided to send it back again to the administration to make sure that the MRF is included into our solid waste integrated plan. So if the question is, do we need a MRF there? The answer is absolutely yes, and we need a better and larger mechanized MRF. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Singh. I'm Jay Fafaro, and I would like to also point out, it is just not a MRF that we need. It is a clean MRF that strategically fits in with the strategies we have for curbside recycling. We want the products to come to a MRF clean, 80% sorted, so that we don't have a dirty MRF where we then have to sort again. And I think Mr. Thronish hit it right on the target when he said, it is a pilot program that we're going to look at in the recycling system, and so therefore, the MRF needs to reflect exactly what we do with sorting, transport trucks. And there's probably not a better time for us in what is certainly not a good, healthy economic time for us to acquire some land from the state, invest in the construction, provide some jobs to do this right, and create the right type of facility. Mayor Singh is correct. The piece that we have was intended as kind of an introductory sorting for paper goods and cardboards, but does not fit with the total plan. And that total plan requires at least five acres of land. It requires at least some traffic plan. It requires a plant that is mechanized and has sort belting and the appropriate ceiling heights and all of those particular things, and has to fit in with what will end up to be a commodity for us. The product is extremely important. Again, I'm Jay Fafaro, and I see my 15-second card, and would consider one of my votes. I'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Aloha, Rhoda Libre. And I concur with them when we were going over the original plans and we had to send it back because it wasn't a clean MRF. We need a clean MRF. And once again, I talk about keeping the socioeconomics for entrepreneurship for each region, for the up-and-coming and small businesses of Kauai to mushroom up and take advantage of this situation, to turn a problem into an asset instead of a debit. We definitely need regional grassroots facilities and satellite stations to not only educate but bring the options to each and every one of them, the young people, the grassroots organizations, the senior citizens. And this is called a watershed approach. We definitely need more higher education in these options that are already before us today. And definitely, this is called a watershed approach, but more so, it's called holistic management. At this time, I'd like to take the liberty and defer, I'm leaving for Honolulu, and I have to catch a plane at around 8:30. So at this time, I'd like to take the liberty to thank each and every one of you for being here today and for listening as well. And you can always call me. My door is always open, 645-1210. And if you have any questions, please feel free to come on by and call me. My door is always open. And please remember me, Rhoda Libre, with my experience for many decades with the community and working with the government and private industry. Keikaha, we're already working on pilot programs as we speak, not only in resources management to save our economics for our people, but also to help with the trash problems. Not only that, how to generate more money and how to build a better future for Kauai. Please remember me, Rhoda Libre for County Council. Aloha, Mabuhai, and God bless. Aloha.
Thank you very much, Dicky Chang. I think one of the things that we need to look at is that we do need to make a decision, find out what we need to do and get it done. Right now would probably be a very, very good time that we can get experts from Kauai that can travel to other communities around the nation, basically based upon the same population base of approximately 63,000 to 65,000 people with a tourist base of approximately another 15,000 to 20,000 on a given day. I think we need to research what's going on out there. The present location that we have right now out in Aho Kini, I believe part of that land, if I'm not mistaken, is state land. I do agree with the fact that the location is a very, very good location. And the reason I say that is that I think a lot of you folks, if you travel throughout the island of Ko'oe, the Hanalei Transfer Station, for example, when they have to take it all the way out into Keikaha, you realize that these, it takes a lot of time, number one, it takes a lot of labor, it takes a lot of gas, it takes a lot of energy. But we've got all these big machineries on the road, and obviously, they're putting up, plugging up traffic. I think the present location, being that the fact that this is the central core hub, that everybody's coming to either do banking, do business, do shopping, this Lehiui area would be a convenient spot. So if we're talking about experts and we're talking about getting a real clean, separated MRF to make everything happen as far as recycling is concerned, I believe the location is a good, fair location for everybody because it's sort of like out of sight, out of mind. If you're not going out to Aho Kini, you're not going to see what's going on there unless we're dumping something or recycling. So I support the present location that we have right now, and I also do support the energies and the ideas that the professionals can come in to give us the advice of a similar situation and a size of urban America here on Kauai. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Good evening and aloha, Kauai. Darrell County Sheriff, County Council again. You know, when I first heard the word MRF, I thought of MRF as a surfer, not realizing that, you know, MRF is really what we call a Materials Recovery Processing Center. And I think, for me personally, where the MRF needs to go is not to the beach surfing, but be right now at our Keikaha landfill. We need to do one now. And what does, how does the process work? The process is quite simple. You get an outside contractor, comes in, be it on doing what he calls recycling, whatever trash is now going down to the landfill, he'll take it all out, he'll recycle it with his machines, and he'll take those, whatever materials he takes out, to someplace that can be used and remade into something else. Then what happens? What goes into our landfill is just a small, minute part of what could not be recycled. And you guys all know the old plantation days. It used to work. In the backyard, you used to have your grandfather, my grandfather used to go to the dump, take some things out, take some lumber out. He used to take some fence to go fix his big pen. I mean, it worked. And to me, that's what we need, and we need it right now. And I think we have the ability to set it up and be able to get someone to start doing it today. And one day, it won't be called, like you used to call it, a dump or a garbage dump. Now we call it a landfill. We can someday call it a processing center. Then everybody would love it in their backyard. Thank you.
Lonnie Kawahara, running for County Council. The question was, I believe, whether the current resource center that we have in Aho Kini is enough, and we don't need the MRF, right?
More or less.
Okay, we absolutely need the Materials Recovery Facility, being that it's going to be the main component in a successful curbside recycling program and a 3R program. Once again, Kauai needs to be able to turn, divert most of their waste out of the waste stream and convert it and recycle it. The question is pretty simple, so I don't, it doesn't have a very long answer. We need one, need it now, and the other one isn't big enough. Thank you. Lonnie Kawahara. Thanks.
Bruce Place. The MRF is a larger facility. That's basically the bottom line. It needs areas to put stuff, and the new technology is, needs to be implemented in that facility. The current resource center is too small. But what it can be used for is an end product, such as the glass that used to go down there and you had the artists making glass, you know, table things or glass, whatever they made. That's what that center is for, for you to take a product, small amount of it, and turn it into something that the people will use. For, if some of you remember the old dumps, those were recycling centers back in the old times. A lot of times, I used to go in there and I'd come out with more stuff than I took in. Matter of fact, a lot of it's still in my workrooms right now that I'm using. So Darrell's idea of recycling at the dumps right now would be something I would support in the budget. Not a full MRF, but something, an operation there where you're allowed by federal laws to go in there and recycle what comes through. I'm very familiar with the landfill. I live right there. I've taken tours of it. I know the operators. I see what goes through and what goes on down there. There is a lot that could be done right now to separate the metals that go in there, that separate cardboard that goes through. You know, they're supposed to monitor so no cardboard goes in there, but stuff does. We need hands-on on that landfill to start diverting into where we have diversions that can be used. So Bruce Place again, running for council.
Derek, we need to take a break. Yes or no decision when the county council again finds the item on its agenda?
How much more time?
Correct.
Like about a half an hour? You know, I mean, there's been pros and cons about it. There's been people talking about not having pets on the path, and I've listened to the people that testified against them, against that concept, and those people had traumatic experiences. And it's not fair to weigh that type of experience for what we're trying to do. You know, I mean, if they had that kind of traumatic experience, they shouldn't be around animals at all. And I believe there's a pace for walking our pets on the path. There's certain areas that should be limited, and it doesn't take, it won't take me long to make a decision. I can tell you that. Thank you. My name is Rana Gore.
How much more, Christabel Kialoha, how much more time the council should spend on the issue of pets on the bicycle path?
Correct.
Well, maybe 40 minutes. I mean, the question should become very clear when it's time to relook at it. Either we have problems with the pets there. I believe there is a trial period where they're going to try and see if it works out. And people come first. I'm sorry. So if there's any problems, then the decision will be fast. Christabel Kialoha again.
I won't give a specific, oh, I'm sorry, George Thronish Jr. I won't give a specific amount of time we should spend, but I don't think it should be that much of a meeting that should be spent on it. I think there is other concerns and issues that we could tackle during that time period, such as our traffic situation, increasing our bus service, and also to figure out ways to get affordable housing for our island of Ko'oe. Those are the issues and concerns, and also for our people, that is on a high priority list for me. I feel when, if I'm elected and once this trial period is over and I'm serving my term on the council, I would take into consideration all the comments that I hear during this trial period, and I will not be afraid to make that decision. My family, we utilize the path, and I'll call it by its proper name, Ke'alahele Makalai. And it is, it is a very, very, very good thing for our island of Ko'oe. And it's unfortunate we too have animals, and we would love to bring our dogs onto the pathway for the full length, but seeing the shared pathway with the bikes and also with the joggers, the walkers, a lot of family, a lot of coworkers go and walk together, even with the strollers, that's a situation that we need to look at as well. The safety of our people does come first as well. So I wouldn't take that length of a time on this issue. I would be ready to vote, be able to make the decision, once I hear all the comments come through and if there's any other testimonies to go. So mahalo. George Thronish Jr. for Kauai County Council.
Aloha, Kipukai Koalii. Well, I think since the former council has spent so much time on it, the new council won't have to spend too much more time. I think the path involves millions of dollars of federal investment, so I think it's important that the next council ensures that that path can be enjoyed by as many people as possible. So balancing the needs and wishes of different parts of our communities, whether you're a dog owner or not, whether you have a little child, I think what they've done as far as to ensure safety is important, you know, and that is part of our responsibility. But we also have to figure out a way that maximizes the use of the path. The path provides a safe and healthy green alternative to transportation as a choice. The path also provides a beautiful place for all of us to get in the exercise that we need and to enjoy the calming sea breezes and also help our mental health. I think also importantly, what they're doing with the path around the golf course will bring in a safer alignment to the highway. And I think we all know, we've experienced so many deaths lately, and I think it's pretty critical that we start moving in the direction to solve that highway problem there and the deaths that have been, deaths that have been happening there. Mahalo. Kipukai Koalii for council.
Bill Kaipo Singh. An ordinance has been passed, which requires an 18-month time period to evaluate the pros and cons on whether we should continue or discontinue allowing dogs on the path. It's the law. It has been passed. There is no ifs, no buts, no more decision-making. It's the law as it stands today. 18 months from now, we will review this again and make the decision at that time... 18 months from now, we will review this again and make the decision at that time whether we continue, discontinue, modify, or make any changes to the plan. But that's the law as it stands today. There is nothing that we can do at this time. Zero, zero, zero. It is all done. We've done it. That is the law as it stands today. So whether you like it or dislike it, it doesn't make any difference. It's done. That's the law. And 18 months from now, we will then have to make the decision on whether we allow, disallow, or make additional changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Singh. I'm Jay Ferfarro. I, I want to say and concur with the mayor, the three-mile stretch that is during an 18-month trial period is the law. And that a law, I need to point out, and I would want all dog lovers to recognize, it's not effective until December 1. And yet, we have people using the path now that, you know, really need to recognize what we're attempting to do in the compromise that has been allowed. This path will be 17 miles. This path needs to be built. This path is extremely important to our future. And I also want to recognize the mayor, Mr. Singh, who also introduced a companion piece that talks about a dog park. Should we not expand the use of, you know, using the path for your dog and pet? There will be marshals. There will be an opportunity to grade the value of that use, and how much responsibility is taken by those pet owners. And it actually is the right thing to do, because you need to have documented performance before we can say anything more about going forward. That will be decided by the bill in 18 months. It was my compromise on the bill that did not allow it to exceed Pass Lehi or to go into Lydgate Park. There is too much activity there with families, baby luaus, fishing, and those parks are intended for our families, and they're the best value we have right now for entertainment for the families. But it is the law, and my compliments to Mr. Singh for his foresight on the dog park.
I have to say, when I first heard that dogs were going to be walking on the parks, walking along the sidewalks, I had a little bit of a negative feeling, because I had concerns of those that are riding bikes, those that are joggers and pedestrians and what have you. I recently changed my mind, because first of all, it is the law, but as I have been going door-to-door throughout the island of Kauai, I did not realize how many dogs there are on this island of Kauai. And in my understanding, having a recent interview with Dr. Becky Rhodes, there are over two, excuse me, 20,000 dogs on this island of Kauai. Now, there are a lot of obedience classes. I think some of you may have been at the Humane Society several weeks ago. You know, the dog owners are now responsible. As Dr. Becky Rhodes says, you're going to have a six-foot leash, and on the leash, it has to be seen visibly that you have something to scoop the poop with. Now, the dogs, the dog owners are responsible, and Dr. Becky Rhodes, the Humane Society, and those that are lovers of pets, they know that if they blow it, one, one person blows it, they all blow it. And right now, they are adamant about the fact that if somebody's going to go out there and the dog is rowdy, or nobody scoops the poop, the recommendation is bark at them. Just bark at them and say, hey, you got an opportunity right now to be good for all of Kauai. The present stretch on that dog path is the stretch that you could use the dog path, but you know, it, it doesn't affect a lot of the different kids or the more populated areas itself. So at this particular point, it is the law, but what makes myself happy is knowing that there are so many happy people, because there are dog owners and there are pet owners. But more importantly, I myself like to walk, and I do think it's a great, great, healthy alternative, that people get an opportunity to take their dogs walking, because when you get your exercise, you actually get your pet a lot more healthier and happier also. So I do support all the dog lovers out there, and I do know that I own a pet, and I vote. So I got a pet myself too. So thank you very much. I hope that made Ron Wiley happy back there. Aloha.
Aloha, and good evening, Darokanashero. You know, the big issue for us was not too much of the dog poop. The big issue was liability issues. I think we have a process in place. The Humane Society has come out and worked with a process in place, where if you're going to take your dog, first of all, you've got to make sure your dog is licensed, so we know that that dog belongs to you. The other thing we did is that, they got to get a bag. They have to carry a bag with them and be visibly on the leash. That bag has to be there. You have to see it. If not, they'll be cited. That is the law. You'll be cited if not. The problem is, we don't know when, we can't tell our dog when to poop and not to poop. So it'll happen, but we need the responsible people that will be able to do it and abide by the laws. Now, when it comes up, yeah, it'll be under the new county council, because it'll be up 18 months from now. Hell, I don't know if I want to be on that council if it does come back, huh? But no, but really, the truth is, the issue was really about liability. And I think with the 18-month period that we have, the 18-month period for the people that want to take their dog out there to show that it can work, is the responsibility of each dog owner. And if it does work, we find that the poop is not a big problem, and it's not a big problem to have dogs back there on, on the bike path again. So it'll, it'll test out its own self, and I think it won't be a very, very hard decision for the council to make. At that point, we'll have the records that show that we've had some problem. You'll have some pretty angry county workers if we do. So I think it won't be a contentious issue. We can make the decision like that. Thank you.
This is actually the first time they've, that question's ever come up in the forum. A forum.
I apologize for that.
Yeah, I like.
It's your turn, Lonnie.
It is. It is, it is, it is. Bruce is letting me use his cheat notes. No. I have, it's my understanding, yes, that, that the, there is a trial period in place for 16, is it 16 months, 18 months? I'm sitting here trying to calculate how long 16 months is from now. That's June 2011, so 9, 10, my, is that a two-year or more? I'll be there. If I win, okay. I have to be honest, I don't understand how there can be so many paths and, in the country that are able to, able to have dogs and people walking on them at the same time. I don't, I'm not clear on why it's become so difficult to do it here. I understand that each, 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 each party has its own rights, but I just have to say, it, I, I think there's overwhelming evidence that, that there are more stories of success on a basic concept like this than there are failures. I would like to, I would like us to be able to have both parties be able to use the multi-use walk. Well, my understanding is also that the federal government is the one that gave us most of the money for that walk. I believe there are compliance issues that might even allow animals to be walking on that path with their people. But that's my honest answer, and that's where I am with it now. Lonnie Kawahara, and county council. Thank you.
Well, I was one of those people that were sitting there watching this whole thing unfold over the last couple of years. I spent, besides the incumbents, I think I'm the only one that spent all that time sitting there. And the answer to the question, we've already spent too much time on it. My only concern is the jeopardy of the federal funds if the shared-use path does not comply with federal use standards that the county agreed to. That's my only concern, because if we are in violation of the federal standards, we have to pay back three times what they, what they gave us. So that's my concern. As for the use of it, it's for public use. It's, can be used what the public wants it for. One of the concerns I have on the present outlay of the path is that it only has a 30-foot right-of-way. That's too small. A 50-foot right-of-way would be much better, so that we can use it for multiple uses without being on top of each other. A concern of mine is that as you're walking your dog and somebody is trying to ride a distance on a bike, we have a collision. I would like to separate the uses of it. That's why I think we need a wider path area. Also too, we have complications now by allowing dogs on a leash on a public, on a path area that is a park. What about the rest of our parks? So these are issues that need to be looked into, which if I'm on the council, I'll be sit there for quite a few hours, listening to all the areas. But I, I don't see any problem with dogs in parks either on a leash, as long as they're under control. So, and actually too, during this process, I did send information to the council on other paths in the United States and what was going on, and I hope that information was helpful to them. So thank you, Bruce Place. Have a good evening.
You know, I want to thank council member Kanashiro for bringing up that the issue at hand was liability. The other two issues-
State your name.
Oh, Derek Kawakami. The other two issues that I identified were those of maintenance and enforcement. Those are the other two main issues that I, that I could pick out. Before I go on, I want to thank a few people. I want to thank Mr. Thomas Noyes, the people of Kauai Path, and the people of the Kauai Humane Society, because they've been really leading the charge as far as this, this bike path goes. As far as my answer to how much more time spent, as much as necessary, because if you're a council member and the issue's at your table, it's an important issue to somebody, it should be treated as such. I'm going to take myself out of the box, out of the box, and, and put myself in another person's shoes, which is the mayor's role. You know, when we're young, we have to go in class and say, if I were mayor, I would do this, this, and this. Well, if I were mayor, I would hire one person to maintain that path, and that'd be Thomas Noyes. I'd tell him, Mr. Noyes, you're in charge of maintaining this path, enforcing and getting the community together, because he's already doing it. He's already organizing path cleanups. He's already organizing with the Humane Society as far as enforcement. I'd say, you're the only guy I got money for. You're in charge of this path. I'm going to hold you accountable, get the job done. And, you know, we would, we would see what the standards are if he's performing, but the point is, he's doing it already. And if I were Mr. Noyes, I would go and look down the list of everybody that testified in favor of having dogs on the bike path and say, okay, this is the team that we got to work with. They all testified that they could maintain it, that they could coexist, so let's go out there and prove the public that we can coexist. And I'd get all these guys in line and get them to schedule some time to put into the path. And that's just thinking outside of the box. So if I'm a council member and I see a proposal come in from the administration with this kind of idea, I'm planning to support it. So thank you. Derek Kawakami.
Hi, this is Tim Bynum. We have a shared-use path. That's what it's called. It's no secret that I'm a big supporter of the path. I've been working on it for years. In fact, I wrote the funding proposal that first brought together the federal government, the state government, and the county for phase one of the bike path in Lydgate Park. It's something that I'm very proud of. Regarding animals on the path, shared-use paths have federal standards that anticipate shared use. They anticipate that people will walk their dogs. In fact, virtually every path in the country allows dog walking. I think we may be the only one that put a ban on it. Why do we allow that? Because every community in our country deals with animal issues through a leash law and through standards that hold pet owners responsible for their pets. Now, I actually introduced two laws, one that would allow dogs to walk on the path, and one that created a nuisance ordinance that said, those of you who do walk dogs, you can't leave poop. You have to pick it up. You have to behave properly. Animal, we have issues with animals. Animals are supposed to be on a leash, and they're not. There are people who are intimidated by dogs, and sometimes dog owners are in denial about that. So I felt it was a balanced approach that said, on one hand, be responsible for your animals, strengthen the law that requires that responsibility, but allow the shared use that's reasonable and customary everywhere in the country. I don't think government should be in a position of taking liberty away from people, but we should be accommodating it. Now, for all of those that, we have this path, it's great. We do environmental assessments. We have six phases, and we learn, you know, like in school, learn to share. And we do have a learning curve about learning to use multi-use paths. Regarding liability, it's a fact, the county has never been sued for an animal issue in a public place.
Okay, that concludes the fourth question. Okay, that concludes the fourth question. We're now moving on to the last and final question. This will be asked of Christabel Kialoa first. Is the Kauai County general plan a nice bookend or a document that needs to be updated and
Absolutely. We need the general plan there to be more than just a what-if or wish list. I would strongly support that an ordinance be passed that if anybody is not in compliance with the general plan, they would have to seek approval by the council, because we're directly responsible to the people for the general plan. And that variance any more than 3% to 5% needs special approval. And I strongly support that it be updated. I believe it was made in 2000, and it's almost time for review. We have to update it. And it's the will of the people, the people that have put in the time to make it, and we need to honor that, as my friend Tim Bynum has been telling me for years. And I support that, that the general plan is our accountability. Thank you.
George Throneish Jr. The general plan needs to be updated, and I am looking forward to have the opportunity, if I'm elected, to be a part of that council that will finalize the new update. Councilman Ron Koche is a man of wealth and information regarding the development here on the island of Kauai. And I feel that many of the developments going on, a lot of us have learned, especially for myself, running for office, is that many of the developments coming up now were developments that were approved in the past 30 years ago. And what I would like to do, and that's my main purpose of serving on this council, is to make sure that the new update is followed through. We need to be sure that we're protecting our natural resources, our island of Kauai, for the betterment of the future of our next generation. And imagine 30 years ago, buildings being approved, developments being approved, and only now we're starting to see them come up. 30 years ago, that's when I was born. So it's a time for me to step up and make sure that the next generation after me is protected for the future. So I'm looking forward, if I get this opportunity to serve, to be a part of this council that will make sure we have a plan that's updated, improved, and it's followed through for our future generation to come. Mahalo.
Aloha, Kipuka'i Kualii. So the general plan is our guiding document for how we grow on our island. The general plan balances, is how we balance economic growth along with environmental protection. The plan is due to be updated in 2010. I think we do it every 10 years. I think it's critical that we approach this process coming up in 2010 from a point of involving as many from the community as possible. I'm a community organizer. I think we just need to get out there and organize the community and make sure more and more people are part of the plan. Because if they help create the plan, then we have the buy-in, and they help make sure the plan is implemented. The people, it's the people's kuliana to stay on top of us as elective leaders, especially the mayor, because I think it starts with the mayor, and our next mayor is going to be really important. important for how we grow and develop on this island. So I'll say that our quality of life is being diminished because of our planning processes' failure to direct and control growth. And it's crucial that we work to protect our island lifestyle. And we should require adherence to smart-growth principles. And we need to pass a use-it-or-lose-it law, so that unused development rights expire and not remain in effect indefinitely. Let's also amend the coastal setback laws and make sure they're based on scientific, on the scientific results of the coastal erosion study. You know, had we had a use-it-or-lose-it law, what George Thronnis was talking about, those rights that were given out for building of these hotels in Poipu like 20 and 30 years ago, that would have been over. You know, you build it in five years or so, or else, you know, you reapply for a permit again. We need to protect our quality of life. Mahalo, Kipukai Kauli.
Aloha again, Bill Kaipoa Singh. By policy, the plan is updated every 10 years. The general plan is updated by the Planning Commission, who works with a consultant and a community work group. They are the ones that put the plan together. After they get through with their process, which includes community input throughout the island, many meetings, setting goals, standards, setting the entire planning process and plan up, when they get through with it, the commission passes the plan. The plan is then forwarded to the county council. The county council takes that plan and goes through, again, the same process. They have public hearings. We have public notices. We go out to the public. We discuss in our meetings with the public about all of the facets of the general plan. After all of that process has taken place, the council then makes its final decision, comes up with the final plan, and passes the plan, and that is the plan that will be enforced for the next 10 years. There has been occasions in different times in the past that the 10-year period was not completed timely, it was late, but the policy is 10 years, you do a change in plan. That is the policy, and the commission and the council have been untimely in some instances in some years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Singh. This is Jay Faro, and I want to just kind of follow up on what Mayor Singh has just said. You know, between the 2000 plan, I think the previous one was 1982, so there was an 18-year period and a really growing list of required actions. And as I shared with you, I've been on the council now just three terms. But I do want to say, it's not just about the zoning densities and so forth. They require public hearings, policies, and so forth to change. But we're dealing with many of the items that were carried over from the '70s, and the reality is, we need to have a way to control those permits, so that while, as we build, we are also able to give full employment for those people that are in those industries. But what has happened in the last six years, and I certainly hope that within the next six months, we're naming the new commission for the next update. We had things in the action, required action, transportation, which included the bike path, which included expanding the bus, which we're doing at a rate of about 20% a year. Coastal lands. We now have shoreline legislation, shoreline setbacks. Those were required action. We had energy policies. We've just discussed tonight about the documents that we got from RW Beck. Solid waste was in there, the need for MRFs. Police and fire were in there, and we've identified critical areas at the end of the road in Hyana and a new station in Kapaa by Mahilona. Transit vacation rentals were desired to be managed through the document. We have a transit vacation rental document. And I just want to say, the last item was also policies about invasive species. And this council, despite not getting money from the state, have been very successful with the koki frog. So those types of things are in that general plan and require action by the council. I'm Jay Faro, and thank you for letting me answer that question.
Thank you very much for the, once again, for the radio audience, and Hoiki, I'm Diki Chang. It's very interesting, because if you look at the general plan for the year 2000, I think most of us remember, and many of us have been and went through, the hurricane, Hurricane Iniki. And I think, as all of us know, when the hurricane blew by, it wasn't like it was a bright sunny day thereafter. Consequently, the years went by, and we had hard times in '93, hard times in '94, hard times in '95, hard times in '96, hard times in '97. And consequently, I believe, a lot of the general plan, when it was written and what was proposed, it was written on the times that we were going through at those particular times. Shortly after the year 2000, specifically, of course, we had 9/11, and then the real estate market started to boom. You know, a lot of the problem that we see right now is that, as Kipukai was mentioning, we need to do a use-it-or-lose-it, because as many of us know, if you have an opportunity to take a drive down to the south shore, a lot of that development that we once saw that was supposedly robust, many of the things are just at a standstill right now. In fact, remember when a lot of the controversy was dust? Right now, there's really not a lot of dust being pushed around, because there's not a lot of building continuing. And what we have to go deal with is the fact that we're looking at, you know, we're looking at that black mesh fencing, and we got poles that are standing up, and who's responsible for all of that? Because nothing is happening right now. So it's a very exciting time, I believe, for the council that's going to be during the rein and the tenure at that time, because all of the people over here, we've got a lot of different people have come to the island, we've got a lot of different issues. So for myself, I think it's an exciting time for Kauai, because we can look at the times that we have presently right now, and we can look ahead of times, and hopefully we'll be a lot more in a better economic state. But I'm very, very excited about seeing the general plan for the year 2010, because I believe it's going to be a very, very exciting time for all of Kauai and our residents to give our feedback on bettering Kauai and Ni'ao. Thank you very much. Diki Chang. Aloha.
Good evening, Darokonashiro for council. In 1998, I was the planning chair of the council, and I ushered and shepherded through the general plan. I've got to refer to shepherd, because I do raise sheep, as a lot of you know. The main policy of the general plan, really, was to be able to give guide for land use, guidance for land use, and a regulation in regulating the locations and character of new development and future development. It was a vision. It was a vision that was set. And I'm not sure if we need to set another vision in the next year or so. The real problem we're facing is that we have a comprehensive zoning ordinance that was adopted in 1976 and has not been changed. The general plan talked about what resort areas should be and where they should be and so forth. We never foreseen the effect of what happened in Poipu, because a lot of those zonings were pre-'76. They weren't covered in any of the zoning policies we have. So, yeah, we said it's going to be resort areas. We have resort areas here. We have resort areas in Prinfo. We have agricultural land here, agricultural land there. The real problem we have is that the comprehensive zoning ordinance is still not updated, and this has caused a lot of problems. And it will go away from the vision that we originally set under the general plan and adopted in the year 2000. So I think, you know, we need to take a step back. We need to look at what really happened later and see that we could probably change it by not changing the general plan itself. The vision is there for the future for now. Thank you. My time is up.
My name is Lani Kawahara for County Council. The general plan is an excellent document. It's a wish list of what the county, what the community wants and sees what Kauai will look like in the future. I'd like to discuss again what he was talking about, about the CZO. That in itself is the legal document that guides how the island is developed. It is from 1972, and it is one of my major, one of the major reasons I'm running. It needs to be updated, and there also needs to be a build-out study. I don't believe that's ever been done either. A build-out study would have been able to identify these projects that were permitted 30 years ago and still outstanding, so that we would know what kind of infrastructure issues we would face whenever those developers decided to build. A build-out study would tell you where your infrastructure is going to need to be beefed up and where other developments may sprout up at any time. The CZO is actually, I think, the one with the teeth in it, and the general plan gives a vision and a hope and guidance on where we'd like to go in the future. But the CZO definitely needs to be updated, because that is the legal document which allows development in areas and doesn't allow development in other areas. And it also distinguishes what kind of development is allowed and what the difference is between ag land and non-ag land. And that is where our issues are right now. We have so much different uses for our land, and there's nothing guiding it at the moment except the 1972 document. Again, my name is Lani Kawahara. We have a lot of serious issues that are based on that type of planning, and it's my hope that I get on the council so we can address that and make our quality of life here better and not be held hostage to something that was done 30 years ago. Thank you.
For those of you who may not know what the CZO are, it's a comprehensive zoning ordinance that was created in 1976, which is kind of the master plan for zoning, and it has not been updated since. Is it '70? I thought it was '76. Is it '72?
'72, '76. General area, yeah. Anyways.
Bruce Place. This is the general plan. Mine's kind of well-used since I was given it to me when the general plan was approved. I spent 38 sessions there at least, and I worked with everybody who was there. And I'd really like to thank Keith Nida, who's over there in the corner, as the long-range planner. He was instrumental. He was very good at what we were doing, and I learned a lot from him. Also, to the consultant team, Robin Foster, Nadine Nakamura, and Roxy McDougall, I hope we get that quality again. The Citizens Advisory Committee is the one who guides the process. I'll also bring something up. As Darrell said, 1998 is when we started on the 2000 general plan. It is 2008, and there's been no monies appropriated and has not started yet. This is typical for what we have seen. We're always a little behind the ball. So we need to have budget monies appropriated in 2009, and we need to get on this very quick. This plan was passed November 30, 2000. So this is something that needs to be done. The general plan is fairly sound. It needs to be updated, but with what has changed in the last 10 years, there are areas that will need to be addressed. Also, as was mentioned, the CZO is in the process of being updated. Where that update is, I have no idea. That money was appropriated, it should have already been here. And that is another important document, because that guides our development standards and also sets by law what can be done in different zonings. And that is important. And it is so old, it does not even come close to what we have happening now. So, thank you very much. My name is Bruce Place, running for County Council, and everybody have a good evening.
Aloha, Derek Kawakami. I know it's been said before, but I'm going to say it again, just so that everybody's clear on it. The general plan is a direction-setting policy. It's a vision policy. It's kind of like a blueprint or a compass of where we should be and what we should look like. The CZO is where the real power lies. And as far as updating the general plan, I think this current general plan is excellent. So I'm all for the update, because you've got to get community input, because you've got to get community input so they can buy into the plan. So I've got no problems with them looking at it. But I don't foresee too many drastic changes, because it's written so beautifully. If we were to follow the general plan, we would have the Kauai that we all know and love. I mean, absolutely, if you get an opportunity, please check it out. So the CZO is in the power of the council, and what we can do as council members is we can introduce ordinances to align the CZO with the general plan. You know, I think it's unfair sometimes that we put the blame on the planning department and the planning commission. And the reason why I say this is because they are working within the parameters that our lawmakers have set. So as a council member, if I'm not setting parameters to give the commission and the department to work within, all they're doing is following the law, and that's where it lies. So I have no problem. What we need to do is we need to introduce ordinance, update the comprehensive zoning ordinance, and set tighter parameters so that we can align the action, which is the comprehensive zoning ordinance, with the direction, which is the general plan. Mahalo, Derek Kawakami.
Hi, this is Tim Binham, and this is the issue. Most of the problems we have on Kauai has to do with the lack of planning, plans not done, or plans not implemented. The general plan is the citizens' vision, and that vision, stated real briefly, is that Kauai remain the unique and special place it is, a rural character with cool towns that are separated by open space and view planes. And it takes 75 specific actions to put that in, as everybody here has said. We've only taken a few, and this is why I ran for council in the first place. To give you one example, Chapter 5 is about preserving rural character. It says that the land in between, the ag land, needs to be preserved, and we need to resist sprawl of ag subdivisions that are supposed to be for agriculture, but we all know are not. It outlines very specific steps to be taken. It says, "This is the problem. This is our highest priority. Let's get to it." Those bills were introduced last year by Mayor Baptiste and are stuck right now, the bills to address that one of the 75 issues we need to in the general plan. The general plan envisions a pacing growth over a period of time, so we even out the busts and the booms. You know, when the general plan happened, the state said, "You're going to grow this much, Kauai." And Kauai said, "No, we want to grow half that amount." So it envisions pacing growth, but to successfully pace growth, you have to do the homework. You have to do impact fee studies. You have to do studies that show how the growth will pay, and you have to implement the ordinances to do it. Earlier, we had a question about how we spend time at county council. This is where we should spend our time, not micromanagement of good projects like the bike path. And so, hope I come back.
I've got a different take on this. I agree-
State your name.
Well, my name is Ronald Gore, and I agree that the general plan is a very good document, as everyone here has explained, and I agree with all of them. The general plan talks about one area of growth, and that's the densitizing of our town cores. The general plan says that we want people to move into our town cores so that they can help the economy of the town. Waimea needs densitizing to help Main Street. Hanapapi needs it. Leihui needs it. Now, the biggest entity that has neglected the general plan is the county, because in the general plan, it talks about densitizing our town cores, and it also talks about providing infrastructure in the town cores. And nobody's more responsible for infrastructure in our town cores than the county. We have people that want to densitize Waimea Town, that want to densitize Leihui, but every time they apply for a permit, there's no infrastructure. So our general plan basically have not materialized, because our county has just not followed the general plan in infrastructure. And one of the reasons I'm running for council is to make sure that our town cores grow so people can live and work in town. With the cost of gas, why force them to drive? Our businesses downtown can prosper- Our businesses downtown can prosper by densitizing downtown. So it should be a high priority. Yes, councilman Bynum is talking about slowing growth out in the rural area. But you know what? The general plan welcomes growth downtown in our town cores. And we gotta do it. Thank you. My name is Ronan Gore. I'm running for county council.
That concludes tonight's questions. I'll give you each one minute to say goodbye. George Stonis Jr.
I'm running for county council.
That concludes tonight's questions. I'll give you each one minute to say goodbye. George Stonis Jr. Begin with you.
Mahalo and aloha again. I'm George Stonis Jr., candidate for Kauai County Council. I humbly ask for one of your seven votes to serve for you, for all of us here on Kauai. I will bring honesty, accountability, integrity, and respect to our council. My late grandfather, Samuel Therones Sr., was raised in Molua'a, Kauai. He worked alongside so many and with others. And a simple gesture of his word and his handshake is the values that were instilled in me while growing up here on Kauai. Is that a vote for me will definitely be never going back on my word. I will do my best. I will try my hardest. And I'm sure every one of the other candidates here will be doing the same for you as well. So mahalo for this forum, for the Garden Island newspaper, Kong Radio, and Ho'ike and everyone else coming tonight. Please support all of the candidates and I humbly ask for your vote to serve for you on Kauai County Council. Mahalo and aloha.
Kipukai Kualii. Mahalo to all the organizers and to all of you listening in tonight. I returned home about 10 years ago to be closer to my retiring parents, to settle down on Hawaiian homestead lands, and to work for the people of Kauai and Ni'ao. On the mainland, I worked in finance to pay the bills and feed myself. I fought for social and economic justice on behalf of minority and worker, worker communities as a volunteer community organizer to feed my heart and my soul. I've come home to fight for you and to serve you. I love Kauai and I know that with hard work together, we can solve our most pressing problems while preserving and protecting our island, our people, and our lifestyle. I have the passion, the intelligence, and the work ethic we need on our council. The most important quality I offer you is my ability to bring people together. Our campaign, Together for Old Time Kauai, is about returning to resourcefulness and sustainability and reconnecting with our traditions and values, especially Malama Aina, caring for our island, and Malama Ke'kahi'i Ke'kahi, caring for each other. I humbly ask for one of your seven votes. Mahalo, Kipukai Kualii.
Aloha and mahalo, everyone. Bill Kaipo Asin. I want to thank the Garden Island for sponsoring this event. I think it's a great event. And I'd like to thank all of those candidates here tonight for stepping up to the plate and putting themselves forward to run for office. It is not an easy thing to do. It takes a lot of time and effort. And I give everyone here a lot of credit for stepping up to the plate. You know, I, I must say that I love the job that I'm doing now as mayor. It's a great job. I've said to myself, if you want something to happen, this is the place it happens. And I'm, I'm enjoying that job. But what I am also realizing now is that I realize now the importance of both having the council and the administration working together. Because without both sides working together, we're not going to get things done in a timely manner. And I will be pursuing that because of my experience that I've had working as mayor. Thank you.
Aloha, this is Jay Farfaro. First of all, I, I do want to thank the Garden Island and Kong Radio and all the listeners for being part of this and getting the message out on the selected candidates. I also want to thank you for allowing me to serve on the county council for the last six years. I do believe that I have a lot to offer, my analytical skills, my business skills. Especially as we look at the global issues around us today. Everywhere from credit to energy, these are issues that will take real sustained thinking and understanding how we do business here and what we need to do to keep our community healthy and safe. It has been a real privilege and I do hope to continue to serve by asking you for one of your votes. I also want to thank my family, my wife Emma, my daughters, for allowing me to do this. And again, thank you very much for the privilege so far. Aloha, I'm Jay Farfaro.
Thank you very much. I'm going to echo all of our candidates and thank the Garden Island newspaper, Kong Radio, and our viewers at Ho'ike Public Television. Again, my name is Dicky Chang. And I've been very, very blessed to have a very unique situation in which for the past 14 years, I've been able to go from the North Shore to the South Side, to the East Side, to the West Side and become extremely familiar with education, with agriculture, with the military, with the hotel business, small business, large business, private sectors. And I've been able to talk to so many people here as I go door-to-door throughout the island of Kauai. I have learned to listen and I really, really enjoy meeting the people and talking to people about their issues. Let the plane go by.
Airplane pause.
But sincerely, I do want to take this opportunity to thank everyone and especially to all of you here on the live audience. I know that you folks have a lot of other things to do. You're here to support all of us here. But most importantly, you are very, very concerned about the future for Kauai and Ni'ao. So, you know, I would really, really appreciate having one of your votes. I do feel that I can hit the ground running. I believe I know the issues that are very important to our people and it'll be a pleasure of serving all of you. Thank you again. My name is Dicky Chang. Mahalo to all of you for coming. Thank you.
Aloha, Kauai and Ni'ao. Darokanishiro for county council. My hands-on experience working on a ranch gives me the experience and knowledge of how I can perform and will be able to set the best policies for this island for the preservation, diversity, and balance of our island and its people. I want to take this time to, few seconds that I have left, to thank my son, Darokanishiro. He's my campaign manager. Also, Michelle Imura, who's my treasurer. And I also want to thank the people of Kauai and Ni'ao for giving me the opportunity to serve for terms on the county council. And I deep-heartedly thank the current county council for allowing me to serve the term of Kaipo Asin. And again, in closing, I ask the people of Kauai and Ni'ao for one of your seven votes. Darokanishiro for county council. Thank you.
My name is Lani Kawahara. And I want to thank the Garden Island and Adam Harju for hosting the event and for Kong for airing it. I believe that this might be one of the last forums that we're all going to be participating in. And I wanted to recognize all the candidates. And I wanted to share with you that it takes a lot of passion and a lot of hard work to do this and to get up here. And you should be very happy and proud to have people that want to step up to the plate to do the best they can for Kauai. So I think you should give all of them a great big hand. I, of course, think you should give me, though, one of your votes. Because I have the legislative experience from working with our senator Huza at the Capitol. I also have the experience with working in the community. I've done that for him and I've done that as a library administrator in Princeville and in Kapaa and all through my career. I also believe that I can be the fresh voice that we need on the council, that we could use on the council. So please, I hope you give me one of your votes, Lani Kawahara. Thank you.
Bruce Place. I'd like to give thanks to the Garden Island for sponsoring this, for Kong for airing this, and for the people of Kauai for being the people of Kauai. For those people that have watched Channel 53 and observed my actions in the government meetings over the last decade, you know where my heart is. My heart is for protection of Kauai, to preserve our rural character, not to let us get overdeveloped. And I've had to do that by attending many meetings and putting much of my heart into it and watching some of it being addressed. But that doesn't faze me because I'll just keep on going, kind of like that ever-ready guy. But what I have, if I'm a council member, I can be the bridge between the council and the administration. I know them. I speak to them all. I also have very good working relationship with our federal and our state representatives. I know them all personally. So I will represent the people of Kauai. And my time is up, but I'm going to go for this last paragraph here because it's important. I'll fully support the decision that the people of Kauai make on this ballot on the charter amendments. You can, I will support what you say. I will not vote against what the people say on the charter amendments. That is my job. So thank you very much. My name is Bruce Place, running for county council.
Hello, everybody. I'm Derek Kawakami. And the reason why I am running is because I want to pass on something better to the next generation than what I founded in. We all have to realize one thing. With all the issues, with all the pain and strife, with everything that comes along, this island, Kauai, is not mine. It's not yours. It's not even ours. This island is our children's. It's our grandchildren's. It's our kekis. It's our great-great-grandchildren's. And we are put here to take care of this island so that one day we can pass it on. And that is what it is all about. I just want to say that I look forward to perhaps serving you. At the, at the end of each decision that I make, I go home to my two young children and I, I have to look at them in their eyes and I gotta be able to go to sleep at night. When I take my kids to the beach, I think of them one day taking their kids to that same beach and how their kids will one day want to go to these same beaches. And this is the values that motivate me. So please, I sit here humbly tonight asking for your support. Do not vote for me on experience. Please vote for me on the values that I stand for. Thank you. Mahalo and aloha. Please kokoa. Derek Kawakami.
Hi, this is Tim Bynum. Good evening. You know, I met many of you volunteering at Lydgate Park. And before I worked for the county, I was a volunteer that did lots of community projects. And I got to meet lots of people. But my life got changed up six years ago when I went to work for the mayor's office doing community outreach. And I got to meet so many more people on Kauai all over. And, you know, Kauai is such an incredible place, not only for its physical beauty and for its environment, but for the people that live here. The people who were born and raised here and the people who've come here. We have so much potential. It is so exciting to be a citizen of Kauai. But we also have big responsibilities and the county's got lots of work to do. You know, we didn't talk tonight about drugs. We didn't talk about traffic. We didn't talk about all of these issues. Working in county government's very sophisticated and we have to do it as a team. There's been too much dissension in the team. And relationships are important. Working collaboratively, valuing the input of everybody, treating people with respect are very important. And also being knowledgeable and bringing that experience to bear. I, I'm asking all of you to continue to support my journey for six years by voting for Tim Bynum for county council. Thank you.
Aloha, I'm Ronan Gore. And I humbly ask for one of your seven votes this November 4th. I believe that I can contribute to the council in helping this community with a new face, with new ideas, with a passion to change whatever doesn't work. We are in bad economic times now and we have to think out of the box to get us through. I believe that the goodness and the strength of a community comes from strong families and strong small businesses. And every decision I would make if I were to be elected on the council would be based on how well the solutions to the problems serve to strengthen our families and strengthen our small businesses. I will make every effort to take action that would put people back to work. My name is Ronan Gore. Please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you to the Garden Island, Adam, Ron, and the publisher for doing this. This has been a wonderful forum. I offer with Joanne Yukimura, Shailene Sari Cavaleo, and Mel Reposo leaving the council, I offer my 22 years plus as a deputy attorney general for the state's chief law enforcement agency advising administrative departments, as well as my, my skills as a teacher, but most of all, my commitment to perpetuate and revive the spirit of aloha in all that we do. I, I've come to love all of candidates here. And I will continue to push that so that our island can be one where we will talk with each other and come to solutions in an environment that promotes aloha, that special spirit only we can promote. I ask for one of your votes. My name is Christabel Kawahi Ke'aloa. And I approve this message.